Your system right now.
Me. You're funny.
You are.
Kids. I haven't seen her kids in forever. Comment and tell me pictures. So crazy.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to the order of this meeting of the Legislative Committee for February twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Um, as we call it, correct? Or shall we just do introductions? We usually defer to the councilors and then staff get ready next as they speak. Okay, if they speak, then they all. Absolutely. I'm Julie Coy.
Vanessa Nordick.
Lyndon Ishioka.
Urban Brown.
Second. Okay, great. Thank you very much, everyone, for being here. What kind of legislative updates do you have?
Mark and Terry, would you like to lead us off with what we should or could know about our federal legislative updates?
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. Um, it, the short answer is, uh, everything is happening.
All at once.
Kind of all at once, exactly. Um, I feel like it's, uh, this is, it's, it's been a unique experience for me, and I've been doing this for a long time. I've either been in, working for the, the US House or in private practice as a, um, as a lobbyist for more than twenty-five years. And this is kind of the, there, this is the most stuff that just is kind of going on all, all at once. Um, I think we're, a lot of it was work having to wait and see, mode, trying to differentiate between what are statements that are being made about things that are going to happen, and then things that are actually going to happen. Obviously, a lot of stuff is happening. There are a lot of layoffs that are happening in a lot of agencies all across the government. And we're kind of waiting to see what the impacts of some of those layoffs will be and whether there are going to be additional staff reductions. There is a lot of talk about, um, impoundment, uh, which is, we thought was settled, uh, law, whether or not the, uh, administration could choose simply not spend money that as, as required to do by law on certain programs. But there hasn't been necessarily any action on any of those kind of fronts yet, other than kind of some short-term hold, holdups or freezes or things of that nature. So we're with all of our clients, just kind of trying to stay on top of things, make sure we're keeping track of kind of what is real, reporting from you all back to the delegation on actual specific problems that we, that we see, so they can be aware of what's happening and they can kind of take action on your behalf. Um, and just kind of, but a lot of it is kind of a little bit wait and see and see what kind of the actual implications of all the stuff that's happening right now, because it, otherwise, I mean, I do feel like I can be in meetings for half a day and come back online and have like nine executive orders sitting there waiting to kind of, kind of work through. So there's, there's a lot happening on the, on the federal side, but I think the actual what it all means still hasn't really fully revealed itself in a lot of, in a lot of cases. Terry, is there anything you want to add to that?
I think that's exactly right. Um, the only thing I'd add is that the Trump administration is adding their political staffs to the agencies on a daily basis. There's more and more, more people there. Not to say that they are fully staffed by any stretch of the imagination, but there's more people popping up who we are able to have conversations with. For example, um, I think one of the very few, if only transportation politicals, uh, besides the secretary and the chief of staff, uh, I met on Wednesday night and she, I can report that she is extremely competent. She's a seasoned Hill committee veteran. I think that she'll be very good to work with. She was very professional. I have high hopes for, you know, working with her. But she also is the only person trying to handle everything at the moment. So, um, I think everything is going to be a bit slow to start, but we're hopeful that once they are able, they are able to staff up, we'll be able to have better connections with everybody. And I would just say on all these things that are going on, that there's no answers to, we've been just stressing, or I've been stressing that it's, it's not that we don't know the answers, is that there, there are no answers. Um, nobody knows the answers to what's going on right now. There's a lot of chaos that we are monitoring and keeping track and trying to sort through the, the noise versus what's reality. And we're certainly going to keep you guys in the loop.
The other thing I'll kind of say is there's a lot of kind of big competing things with regard to both the FY, um, twenty-five budget and the FY twenty-six budget. They're kind of all going on at once right now. Um, the, we are barreling towards the end of the current continuing resolution on funding for the, uh, the federal government, which is in about, uh, two weeks, um, that expires. The thought was they were relatively close to, um, some kind of an agreement where they could actually do an omnibus appropriations package with new FY twenty-five bills for the entire, um, you know, for the entire government. That's been, I think, basically completely derailed by a lot of the, um, cuts and the staffing cuts and other talks about kind of spending cuts done by the administration and talks on reconciliation, which I'll get to in a minute, where basically, um, a lot of, because there is no way to pass a measure to fund the government with only Republican votes. Their margin is too narrow and there, you only need a couple of Republicans to vote no or vote present. Um, to leave you short of the majority in order, in order to pass it. And there are a number of Republicans who basically are going to be no on any measure that you can, that you can kind of pass through on something like that. Um, so as a result, to do something along those lines, you would need Democratic votes as well. And it appears that Democrats are digging in and saying, we are only going to agree on a funding bill if there are assurances that the administration will spend the money as required in the legislation that we're, that we're passing. In other words, we're not willing to kind of pass something and just have our deal that we've struck undone unilaterally by the administration on the back end on that. And as a result, they seem to be going very much towards doing a long-term continuing resolution through the end of the fiscal year, at the end of, um, end of September. That would probably be at FY twenty-four levels. Um, so it'd be probably, uh, although there, there has been some talk and that this is also a problem. If you can't get Democratic votes for that, there's been talk from a number of Republicans, you need to make significant cuts to the FY twenty-four programs for them to be able to come on, for them to be willing to come on board to, to vote for it. And it all could unravel in a hurry, but that seems to be the direction they're going with regard to FY twenty-five, um, for the budget there. Some people have been talking about, including the, um, uh, congression-directed spending or community, uh, and initiated projects or whatever you want to call them there in a long-term CR. Other people have said that those are probably going to disappear. I think that's kind of up in the air at this point, whether those projects would go forward or not, if, um, if they go with a long-term, a long-term CR, if that's the direction we had there. Uh, and then there is the other measure that's getting a lot of talk and it gets confusing, um, because the term budget is used interchangeably to mean like several different things, um, here at the federal level, is the House, uh, earlier this week passed their budget resolution. The way that Congress deals with that is they do a budget resolution at the beginning of the Congress, which actually does not have any kind of impact in law. And they do the appropriations bills which fund the government, which is also oftentimes referred to as the budget on the back end. And those two bills don't need, need to have any kind of, um, any relationship to one another. The numbers that are in the budget that passed at the beginning of the Congress don't need to mirror what gets passed at the end of Congress at all. They, they can be wildly different and usually are extremely different. The meaning of the budget, when it actually ends up mattering, the budget passed at the beginning of the, of the Congress and when it matters is when you want to use something called the reconciliation process to, if, if one branch of the government control or one party controls all three levers, House, Senate and the presidency, you can use something called reconciliation on, on spending or tax measures, so revenue measures, whether it's money in or money out. Um, or you can get it through the Senate without, uh, it being able to be filibustered. It can do a fifty votes plus one. And, um, that's the process they're going through right now, because there is a, the, the Trump administration and the Republicans in Congress have, um, have an agenda that they're trying to, to move through Congress. They have objectives when it comes to tax cuts. They have objectives when it comes to spending cuts and some other, some other things they would like to kind of get done. They, the House budget that passed earlier this year is kind of the first and easiest step in the process to get to that, to, to those objectives. Um, they were able to pass it in the House with no, no Democratic votes and were able to get enough Republican votes, sort of get it over the line there. Um, the Senate will have to take up, you know, they'll have to, they'll have to end up with, with the same budget in the House and the Senate um, in order then move that reconciliation process forward, um, allowing them to, to do the, to make permanent the Trump tax cuts from twenty seventeen, which is a top priority for the administration, as well as to do a number of spending cuts that they're looking to do kind of across a number of different, a number of different bills. Terry, I'll throw it to you again, that I think I'm missing there.
No, I think that's, that pretty much covers it. Just the, the difference between the appropriations and the budget and the budget reconciliation are all very confusing, especially for folks who are used to dealing more with state governments where they use less complicated terminology. So, um, sorry about that.
Sorry about that.
Oh, the, no, I was just saying that, that was really, that's the extent of it. Just there, there's a lot of weird, weird terminology that's confusing, but that's why we're here to, uh, make sure that this is all, we're on top of it for you.
Face to face twenty twenty-five. Um, and thank you, uh, Terry. Because it's hard enough to smile in the midst of it with Mickey Mouse.
Yeah, my, I don't know if Justin's there, but my son decides Mickey Mouse in a Steeler uniform and, um, my son decided that I needed to have it on my couch for some reason.
Well, he's not wrong. I think that's wonderful. Thank you so much.
And he definitely noticed.
Mentioned it like first thing. I was like, look at that Mickey Mouse.
He is, yeah, and he has his little Steeler uniform. He's very cute.
Questions at this point?
Anybody have any questions?
No.
For what the guys are presenting. Thanks so much, you guys.
Thank you.
I don't envy your position, but I'm grateful for it.
Thank you so much.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council and staff. Welcome to our last update here in February. I'll go through a couple of things real quick because as Dr. Brown asked last week, you're going to get to see kind of the meat of the meeting, how we analyze bills, how we get things to the approval process and how we go from there. So that's going to be the majority of the meeting today. That being said, a couple of really key legislative calendar items I want to go through. Talk real quick about the revenue forecast, talk a little bit about the meetings that we've been having in the building, the mayor and I, um, and then get specifically to those bills and then a little bit of admin housekeeping. So with that, let's calendar. As everybody saw, uh, there was a revenue forecast on Wednesday. So, uh, the result of that lawmakers will likely have three hundred and fifty million dollars more in general fund or about one percent more than previously forecast to spend in this next budget cycle. That is good news, but again, that's a tiny amount in looking at the overall projected thirty-eight point two billion dollar general fund. Uh, the governor said she wants to stay focused on the core issues that she has, uh, prior to session, mental health, housing, education, things that will make a real difference in people's lives. Uh, the Senate president was quoted as saying, we still have to be cautious about these budgetary decisions that we're making. Uh, the House speaker talked about, uh, really echoed that view and talked about trying to be strategic or figuring out how to weigh in possible cuts to critical federal funding, as you just heard from Mark and Terry. And then finally, uh, uh, one of the state's economists was talking to lawmakers about how this, uh, population really might have a huge impact here in Oregon, talking about how the state is growing slower than the national average, much more slowly than it did over previous decades. Uh, we lost population during the pandemic and while it's starting to bounce back, uh, her main point was that recovery is very lethargic and that limited population gains could hamper economic growth. So I think we all understand that backdrop. Oftentimes in the state legislature, having more money makes things more difficult. I mean legislators, especially co-chairs, when we're in budget deficits can simply say, hey, we don't have any money available. With this though, I mean, people see more money and people really come in with more asks. Um, and again, we've done a good job laying our foundation on our asks. We've been very focused in our meetings with Salem delegation. So I think things are pretty much, uh, on schedule, looking at that. The other legislative calendar, we will begin daily floor sessions on March tenth. That's not that important to this group, but it does allow me to work a little bit more freely when legislators are on the floor. We can't be outside the lobby like we used to because of the construction, but we can still be at that pressure point where everybody comes into the chamber and we still have conversations. And I say that's good because one, I like to be very respectful of elected officials' time. Um, it's very precious. But two, I'd much rather have a thirty-second hall conversation or a two-minute hall conversation versus taking up fifteen minutes within their schedule. Um, so I'm able to work much more, uh, freely once the tenth hits. Uh, we do have a first chamber deadline coming up in April. We also have a March twenty-first post-work session, uh, deadline coming in March. So we'll keep everybody apprised of that. We'll be meeting before those as we move on. And then, as everybody knows, okay, this, uh, February twenty-sixth revenue forecast was very important, but it all plays into that May fourteen forecast. And as the mayor and I have been meeting with our delegation and legislative leadership, we are making them very aware of, we will have everything in place, but that, that point in time from the fourteenth until signee die on June twenty-ninth is when we will really make these things work. Granted that we don't see something pass on a bill, but we are running those parallel tracks to make sure we have uh, a, a strategic opportunity when the time is right. So, um, that gets us into the meetings. We had a couple more meetings this week, the mayor and I. Those have been going really good. We don't have a big formal agenda when we're in there. It's a meet and greet. We've got a new mayor. We're excited about rolling that out. We're making sure one, the mayor has good relationships already, but two, the ones you don't, we're able to meet and again, be very upfront with people about what our true focus is. Now that we get into this meeting and we are looking at specific bills, that's great on the policy side. But again, we've got those three priorities that we've really been driving home. So we just met with Representative Deal. We've met with Representative Mannix. We've met with Senator Thatcher. We met with Representative Evans. We met with Representative Anderson. Great meeting with Senator Patterson. We, uh, uh, wonderful meeting with, uh, uh, Republican leader Drazen. Uh, good, good meeting with Majority Leader Bowman. Uh, obviously we met with the Speaker. We still need to meet with the Senate President, Representative Munoz, who gets a sliver of Salem, and then Senator Bond, the Republican on, uh, the Senate side. So we're still trying to get those meetings going. And again, those discussions are very focused, one, on the new mayor and getting to meet her as host of the legislative body, and then two, um, in terms of our intentions and what we really need out of this legislative session. And we have not got a lot of, uh, negative blowback on any of it. I mean, I think people understand the value of what we provide to the Capitol in terms of enhanced public safety. So I'm encouraged about that. What you're going to see today are bills. I'm going to turn that back over to you in just a minute, Courtney, but I want everybody to know that Nikki is in constant communication, Nikki in my office, Nicole Holmes, um, with Walt Campbell and LFO, making sure that we've got all our asks in the written form and they're ready to go. Now it's our job to figure out what those fit into, what opportunities will present themselves as we continue to work up until that May fourteen forecast, see what's moving, see what kind of Christmas tree build there is, see what kind of appropriations bills are, uh, floating out there if and when we don't get this House bill twenty-five thirty-one. So with that, Courtney, I know we're going to focus on some housing bills. I know we're looking at PFOS again, which, uh, Jason talked about a little bit at our last meeting. We've got some unmanned aircraft system bills and then finally Rep. Anderson's City of Salem Services bill. Um, and with that, I'll turn it over to you, Courtney, because I know we've got a lot of things to deal with. Any questions?
Um, I would just want to take a moment to make sure that everyone understands what four things are the capital request forms that we've submitted. So the first one is the airport terminal, um, which is a master planning project and, um, that is one of our key legislative priorities. Um, and that is an opportunity for us to work with Oregon Department of Aviation and how that space is used. The second one is the airport emergency power. Um, and we know that that is near and dear to at least one, uh, the folks in, in the building. Um, and then we have the, uh, Capitol District request in as well. And, um, Peace Plaza, just for good measure. Um, as many of you are aware, the Bond project cannot really do as much as we envision for Peace Plaza. And so we have a continual request. We, we've spent a lot of energy and effort making people aware of Peace Plaza as a need. So this is a nice, just continuing on, just in case something gives. So those are the four big things we're asking for. Um, what we wanted to do today is spend a little bit of time with the policy statements, make sure that those accurately reflect um, the legislative committee's interests and then we would forward them to council. Um, and then then we have some broad topics and then specific bills. So imagine sort of, um, a funnel where being big thirst detailed into some topic areas and then specific bills. And so that's the way we were going to approach today, assuming that's okay with everyone. Um, we would just start with the policy statements. We're going to have staff introduce high-level, the subject areas. And if you have comments, questions, concerns, please shout out uh, so that we can adjust them and then we would take them back through council for approval. So Sarah is going to lead us off with economic development as a topic area. So this would be the page right after the agenda.
Uh, good morning, everyone. Um, Sarah, I'm, so I'm with our urban developments arm of community development and planning. So, um, we have an economic development kind of policy area. We've built this up, um, over the last probably five years, really based on a lot of the bills that we were seeing come forward. Um, it's, it's pretty broad because as a lot of you know, economic development can be a lot of different things. So our real focus is making sure that we have, um, we're maintaining protections on land for the types of different development needed within the city of Salem. So making sure we're still looking at our industrial land and, you know, mixed use and kind of those balances. So a lot of times, Eunice and I might sort of collaborate on those types of things. Uh, maintaining a lot of our tools. So whether it's an incentive program, a lot of them are through the state. Um, so whether it's the incentive program itself or whether it's funding those programs. So a lot of the funding could be tied to infrastructure, um, you know, getting the, the sewer, the water, the things of that nature to try and kind of find those funds for. Um, a lot of different programs too that are tied to economic development actually come from the lottery funds. So it's a little bit different, um, although we do have some that are tied to, uh, your property tax rebates like an enterprise zone or something. Um, but when we have those in here, a lot of those are also tied to jobs. So, um, we've tried to kind of narrow the, our focus area to, if you're getting some type of incentive, what are we getting for it? So is it jobs? Is it the infrastructure? Is it something like that? We try and kind of recruit those businesses kind of into Salem. So at the highest level, we kind of look at those different areas um, and sort of just maintaining them in order to have sort of a broad swath of different votes here. And the other thing I would say is we also really focus on cleanup funds. So like brownfields, that's a big one. A lot of the sites that now are a little bit more difficult to develop that we have left, there's some type of contamination. So if the state can have the funding of those larger programs that we can tap into, it makes it easier and we're not having to use the city resources for that. So we're really looking at what other resources are out there and supporting those.
I have a good question, charity zones. Are there still opportunity zones out there? I thought that that program has ended. It's not.
Yeah, those are, and those are state determined at the governor level.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have a lot of involvement in it, other than we know where they are and we help direct people to them. And then we also have our partnership with SEDCORD, so they will also help kind of walk folks through that. Okay. So some of these are things where we make sure we're promoting them, we're connecting people. Um, because once again, it's putting together that package of why you want to come to Salem or stay in Salem.
All right. So we'll just keep moving through. Um, I wanted to invite Josh to talk through the finance, revenue and cost of service. And you'll notice that we're talking about all of these from a position of the city as an organization and the city as our community. So we're, we're looking out for protecting those two ways of considering the city. It's kind of weird sometimes, but that's, that's how we think.
Uh, thank you, Courtney. Josh Adelson, Chief Financial Officer. And I had a couple edits that didn't quite make it in here, I think. Um, but I actually struck out the COVID nineteen recovery resources, just because it's not really applicable at this time. Uh, other things we're looking at, um, basically protecting kind of our, our revenue streams we have in place, looking to enhance things. And property tax reform has been on there for years and years.
And shell everything.
Uh, branch of local government taxing authorities. So we're trying to prevent, um, the state, state leaders from, uh, preventing us from different various taxing mechanisms that might be out there. We're already preempted on quite a few. Uh, so just trying to protect that kind of home rule status. Useful tactics in bonding. Uh, we actually talked about this at the bond oversight committee the other day, so it's protecting that status. And that's more at the federal level than the state level. Uh, we have a couple edits to transportation funding, uh, just to focus more on this current session. Assistant development charges, public contracting policy, public records requests and responses. Um, and one that I was actually looking at was actually on the public employee retirement system. I'm just trying to oppose legislation that would create unreasonable cost increases. We're seeing some pretty uh, high rate changes there. Uh, at the same time, trying to balance, you know, employees that have already earned benefits, trying to, uh, prevent that ego carefully. Uh, but a lot, a lot of, a lot of bills fall into one of these categories. Uh, that's, that's generally, yeah, we look for.
Thanks, Josh. And you'll give me the specifics.
Yeah, you have. Last Friday.
Excellent. Um, and, and so then, um, Michelle Bennett has joined us and I, oh, sorry, Councilor, Councilor Brown, sorry.
Oh, thank you so much. Um, Mr. CFO, I think you probably have already said this, but on the property tax reform is right beneath the COVID nineteen, uh, recovery sources. Um, has anyone on either side of the aisle, have they discussed having an appetite to revisit measures five and fifty? Are we just gonna keep on moving forward?
Um, it's a good question. Maybe Justin can weigh in. There were lots of bills dropped for to study the problem. I didn't see any actual proposed changes, but lots of, uh, efforts to look at it.
Yeah, I think that's right. It's, it's, it's really quite frustrating, right? I think, you know, everybody knows we live in a state with a one and a half legs, three-legged stool, right? So, I mean, I think, and I, I don't want to approach it from a negative aspect, like nothing could ever get done because like, you know, hey, we got self-serve gas, right? That took a while. That, that being said, uh, that being said, I watched a Senate Chairman of Revenue who made this his focus, Senator Haas, back in the day. And he was in the majority party and he couldn't get any traction on it. So it just tells me, it just, it's an example of how difficult this discussion is. Now, I hear it across the board from governments, right? Local, state, tribal. We need a new system. That being said, I just don't see any true action at this point in time that leads me to believe something's going to get done. That's unfortunate. I think we still need to go down that road and have those discussions. But at this time, I mean, we really have to weigh pushing political capital versus something that probably will not happen, at least in the next budget cycle. So.
Justin. Um, and thank you, Councilor Brown, for bringing that up. Um, I heard, I heard studies and sometimes the studies are a precursor to change and sometimes the studies spend money and then are placed on a shelf to collect dust. Is it too soon to tell which campus falls into these various bills to study?
Yeah, and I, yeah, I think that is. I mean, and, and study bills often in the legislative context have more meaning than just a study, right? Oftentimes it's to push things into the future. Other times it's let's take a look, but okay, this will appease the general public for a while. So I just don't, it's just so difficult. And, you know, in the state of today's politics, I think, is another overlay of it's hard to get people just to sit down, have decent conversations and, you know, try to get further down the road. People lose sight and we're all Oregonians, we're all in this thing together. And I've been hearing this from the mayor a lot in our meetings. We've got to find the truth and go after that first before we start working on other stuff that's speculative. And I think, I just think it's a really difficult climate. So I think you're right on with some of the side. That would be awesome, wouldn't it? And put people at the table and get things done. I just, I don't, again, I don't want to be pessimistic. Um, I want to be optimistic in this. Um, because we're all, we are all Oregonians, all, you know, citizens of Salem and we want, we want answers and we want to be able to plan our future. So it's just very, very difficult. And I think the political realities of it at this time are, are very difficult, very, very tough.
Mayor, can I just add a question?
Absolutely. Dr. Brown, just one moment. A follow-up from Councilor Nordic.
Well, it's kind of sort of a follow-up. Um, we, we mentioned Peace Plaza. Um, how much longer are we going to continue to go to the legislature for that ask? I mean, I feel like I've been on legislative committee a little while now. I mean, it, you know, I understand we have limited political capital. I understand you don't want to take too many asks. Our, in my opinion, of course, our single most important ask is twenty-five thirty-one. So I'm just wondering how much longer after this cycle, if we don't get Peace Plaza money, how much longer are we going to continue putting it back on our legislative committee agenda? So it's not a question that needs to be addressed today. I'm in favor of pursuing it one more time this year, but I feel like we've been doing that for years. We haven't gotten any traction on that. So it's more of a comment than, than a. I'm in favor of pursuing it one more time this year, but I feel like we've been doing that for years. We haven't gotten any traction on that. So it's more of a comment than, than a question.
And I'll add to that. Honestly, today, I believe is the first time I've heard it go in all of our meetings. It's the first time I've heard it mentioned. So I'm, I'm not sure where we stand with that.
Yeah, it's been part of our, like Counselor Nordick said, it's been part of our ask. It's been part of, hey, let's keep this around. And I don't mind having those, some of those asks, but it's a very good point that it's been there a long time. Is anything actually gonna really get done? There, there's also the River Road ask that I want to keep alive, especially in a transportation session, because I want to be ready or equipped if extra revenue shows up, maybe fourteenth, or there are certain areas where we could get some funding, right? Because of emergency preparedness, et cetera, that highway between Independence, Monmouth and Salem. Uh, if something happens to our bridges. I mean, I think there's, there's key things that we should always kind of have in our list. And I know Peace Plaza has been on there for a long time. I don't mind having those around and being prepared with them in case we get an opportunity. But to your point, it's been there a long time and the most important thing you said was how, how do we weigh the political capital of that? I'd hate to get a couple million bucks on that and not get what we need in terms of enhanced safety for the long run in a capital district. So we're weighing that at all times. But I do like having those things at the ready, just in case, because you never know.
Yes. I mean, Peace Plaza is a nice to have, but River Road is a safety issue.
I was gonna say, it's just a matter of a need in a line. I, I think, um, I think part of what Justin's talking about or describing is that we want to have, um, oh, you have a 2.5 million, um, need here. Take this project. You know, oh, you have 20 million? Oh, here, take River Road. I think we just want to have that flexibility to be responsive to whatever shows up. Um, but just to clarify, Peace Plaza and Capitol District are not of the same priority. Um, it's just in your back pocket in case there's something that comes up. But, um, Counselor Brown, sorry.
No, no, it's good. Um, uh, Justin, I'm gonna reach out to you. We can have a conversation because I know we're on a timeline, so we can, we can keep moving.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, okay. So Michelle, we were at, um, the point where we were gonna start talking high level through some of the HR statements, please.
I'm actually going to attend a meeting this afternoon with LOC where we're gonna discuss about, uh, 20 or 30 of those, um, bills. So, um, although I can certainly talk to you about them today, if you have those that are concerning to you, but I may have more information at our next meeting.
Okay, that's fine. We'll wait. Uh, we'll just focus on, on those later. Uh, I think that the primary messages, as you look through the HR-related policy statements, you'll see we're all about employee benefits, um, and preserving some management rights in collective bargaining. You'll see a statement about workers' compensation, protecting the city around liability. Um, and then, you know, trying to keep regulations to a minimum. So those are our primary, um, places from which we advocate on behalf of the city around community resources. Um, if we could advance to land use, this is, uh, the Eunice Show.
I stopped hearing that today, realizing Eunice's expression about former topic. Is there anything you have to add?
Um, so Eunice can, long range planning manager, community planning and development. Um, so we're focused largely on land use and it all kind of boils down to trying to maintain our ability to locally plan for and manage our land uses. Um, we do look at how things align with other priorities. So we're being with Sarah on economic development, working on climate and, and often working around housing. Um, sometimes there's been a lot of bills, which I'll talk about later, that are looking to promote affordable housing in particular, and sometimes there's a conflict with land use. And so we work through those, um, bills together. And we typically bring those specific bills to this committee if there are conflicting priorities. But generally, we're trying to maintain our ability to plan for land uses, um, at the local level, taking into considerations, community engagement, things like that. Um, same for historic preservation. We want to be able to maintain our ability to protect our historic resources and to support anything that would be an incentive for more people to be able to do that. Um, and then same with annexation, essentially our, our ability to annex properties and making sure we still have that ability. Um, in recent years, there has been a bill that changed the way we do annexations. Um, in our charter today, for example, it says that most annexations, um, have to go out to the public for a vote. And so we would put those on the general election ballots. Um, but there was a bill that said we don't care about local charters. Um, if a hundred percent of a prop, property owners outside of the city want to annex and they all agree, then you don't have to go out to the ballot and you can just do a public hearing. So that, that passed. It's contrary to our, to our charter. Um, but that's why you see those now coming to council, um, justice hearings. So there's been a lot, there hasn't been a lot around annexation more recently. Um, the bills that I've been focused on are largely around housing, land use and, um, to some extent, historic preservation.
And I can tell you, I, I know residents who, whenever they see annexation on their ballot, they don't do the research, they just vote now. And, um, I don't find that a helpful demonstration of democratic participation. Um, so I, I just have that in mind when I, when I think of that.
Well, so that was land use. And then we'll advance to, um, the, Brian and Trevon are gonna walk us through some of the public safety, um, statements. And I don't know if you guys had a conversation before you.
We did not.
Excellent. Who's starting?
I think the first one, Brian's.
We do, we have, um, public safety answering points. So that's, um, nine one one, or we'll have a ballot communication center. And that has, over the years, shifted from fire to police, that that's back. So right now, it's with fire. And Brian?
Yeah. So when I reviewed this bill, I know I thought it was the first batch. I think it was, it was, it was a big nothing. But then I thought about it. When we are on wildland fires and we're fighting more and more of these fires, the, the use of people using drones and wanting to get a good view of, uh, what's going on and with helicopters dropping water and planes coming in, uh, to the, the local, like, can you hear me?
Yes, but I want to just point out that you are moving down into your review of House Bill 3426. And we are still up at the, um, policy statements.
Oh.
Would you like to?
I can cover it. I got you, Brian. I got you, Brian.
Okay. So put a pause and we'll come back.
Yeah, we're here. So, uh, essentially, uh, a lot of the public safety stuff, it's pretty, uh, topical based on the year and what's going on. Um, so for a long time, there was, uh, push to consolidate or kind of, um, make broader public safety answering points, nine one one. We obviously have nine one one system, uh, or a nine one one call center here, which is regional. Uh, incorporates three counties, uh, with the Ohio Telecommunication Center. And so we want to be able to maintain some autonomy over how that operates. It's a, cause of a city entity as well. Um, with that, there are sometimes, uh, requirements that may result in response times for both police and fire. Uh, for fire, that's tracked a bit more heavily than what we have. And then interoperability, and we continue to work on that. Sometimes there's bills that, uh, allow for funding and grants. And so we want to be able to jump on those when we have that opportunity for that. A lot of that comes through emergency, emergency management and things of that nature. As well as we want to be able to, uh, along with that, some of this has to do with funding. So technology and equipment, when we see grants or anything, uh, else that's gonna come through or support usually through, uh, OEM. And I think we have, uh, one of our representatives is really big on, uh, looking at emergency management bills and sponsors quite a few bills every single year regarding that. Uh, so we want to make sure that we, once again, we can jump on to those bills and support them if we're gonna gain, um, some money for enhancing our, uh, technology and equipment. Um, and then we get into some more of the, uh, finite issues like mental health services, close support for reform in civil commitments or providing more mental health services, because obviously we have a high demand for that in the city. Uh, last year, uh, there was ballot measure one 10 reform. So we took a stance on that as well. There's some more bills coming through, uh, on that, both on uh, lessening ballot measure one 10 and enhancing ballot measure one 10. And then, uh, once again, we kind of go back down to, um, some more of the emergency management with the organs of resilience plan, transportation hazardous materials. And then, um, of course, we're always looking for ability to fund public safety, both police, fire, EMS. And that's where we're looking, when we have the public safety staff to pass the policy statement.
I had some questions about that.
Okay.
Um, civil commitment. Um, we're not taking a position on any civil commitment bills at this time, are we?
We are not planning to. We were gonna bring that forward as a
Right.
topic, broader topic next time. The agenda's fairly full.
Yeah. No, no, that, that's fine. I just want to make sure it wasn't getting subsumed within one of these categories that are mental health services. Um, also, are there any bills to expand nine eight eight funding? If so, how would that impact us and our ability to respond?
That I don't know. Nine eight eight.
I see Justin shaking his head.
I can't remember either. Yeah, there's just so many bills.
There's, there's a lot. Yeah.
Then by eight eight, this is federally funded, uh, project. I don't know. We mentioned against that's through Oregon legislation.
Okay. All right. There's something I would be curious about. If you guys hear anything in future legislative meetings, I'd definitely. Thank you.
Uh, okay. So we will move down then to, um, right away stuff. And this is Ryan. Would you like to introduce the broader statements? You'll, you start to hear some themes about, we want to preserve the city's rights and interests.
Uh, so Ryan's in the finance department, uh, your franchise administrator. Uh, so with right of management, we're looking at a couple of different things. Um, primarily, you know, so this is what we're talking about utilities, like, uh, your gas, your electric, uh, wireless, wireline, telecommunications, broadband, cable. Um, you know, those are the kinds of utilities that we're talking about. But all use our public right way to provide services to their customers. And so as we are working with them, we're always looking to, um, uh, again, retain the authority we have to manage their use of the right way. Uh, one of the, uh, issues that seems to come up a lot is who pays for, uh, relocation of those utilities? Uh, when we, when, when, excuse me, public works is doing work in the road or someone else's, uh, so, and many times those utilities have to be moved or either permanently or, or temporarily. And so, uh, we, we're trying to, we want to maintain the authority of who determines, uh, who pays for that. As the, uh, moving down to the next bullet point, as, uh, franchise fees are the second largest revenue source for the general fund. That's obviously an area that we want to protect, uh, evidently, you know, um, and those are continually under attack, primarily from, uh, telecommunications side. Every once in a while, we get, uh, some pushback from other areas, but your wireline, uh, broadband, um, wireless, um, that's where we see a lot of pushback on, um, on, uh, on the payment of, of franchise fees. There's a lot of federal movement, um, at the FCC. There was Internet Tax Freedom Act here a number of years ago. There's a Cable Act. Uh, and there's a lot of moving pieces around that that, uh, can tend to overshadow what we're doing locally. Uh, and so we are always working to, uh, push back and maintain our local authority in those areas. Uh, the third kind of bullet point under, under the right of management talks about, um, our authority to provide municipal broadband. Now, that's something that we as a city have never pursued. Uh, there was a big push a number of years ago for, um, municipal broadband, the cities provide their own. Um, and that's certainly not anything that we have done yet. But we, uh, want to maintain that authority if that's an area that we want to do.
Thank you, Ryan.
And I'm gonna stop there.
Thank you. These are really big, complicated things, but we are starting from this base. The two more areas, we may have to choose your own adventure. In a couple of minutes after we get through the last two areas, we can either go into more topics or we could go into specific bills, because I think we're gonna run tight on time. Um, but I want to invite Jessica to walk us through the, uh, homelessness and affordable housing, uh, priority areas. Jessica?
Hello, everyone. Um, happy Friday. So the three bullet points that are underneath the affordable housing and homelessness, uh, piece really is to support funding, to prevent or, uh, provide assistance to, um, to intervene with homelessness. Um, and that is just kind of a wide array of the different things that our community partners or the city itself are doing. Um, for affordable housing, we've primarily been focused on multifamily or rental type housing. Um, and so one of the things that I'm considering is, do we need a call out specifically for affordable homeownership, uh, options? And that only speaks to SHA kind of moving in that direction. And so, um, there are several bills that are coming out this session and one of them I'll speak about today, um, which really has a specific call out to affordable homeownership. And so I wondered, uh, should we have a fourth bullet point here? Um, or should it just be kind of, uh, reinforcing that affordable housing? Piece there. So, uh, that was a question I had and then, uh, can provide some language around that. And then, of course, preserving the affordability of our mobile home parks in the area and, uh, working to, um, keep those that are at risk of closing or maybe being redeveloped into a higher dense use, use. Um, really to keep that in our continuum, um, of options for, um, for, for whatever housing rental or, or for ownership. Um, so those are the, those are those three bullet points there. Uh, we did add, uh, a couple sessions ago, the preservation of affordable housing. Um, so that bullet point, that's under the second bullet point. And so that kind of calls out our work around Orchard Park and, uh, the things that happen through that preservation. And, uh, that's all I have.
Jessica, is there a downside to including this fourth bullet point for affordable homeownership?
I don't see a downside. I'd actually maybe like it. And, and since we're kind of moving into this space, maybe create uh, one or two sentences around what we're doing as a city. Um, but also now just engaging with some other community groups like Sebel. Um, I could see us supporting some of the community partners as well in their, um, seek to find funding for affordable homeownership. So I, I see it as being kind of this new, new potential policy statement.
If that's generally acceptable, we would try to do that for council's consideration.
I'm in favor. I'm in favor.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so we'll add something. Thank you. Um, and then our last area is on the environment and it's sort of a mixed bag of things, uh, but it all fits in that category. And Judy, uh, would you like to introduce those?
Yes. Judy Nanda Douglas, Climate Action Plan Manager. So in our environment, uh, category, first we have municipal water rights. And so that's, um, protecting our ability to, uh, serve and preserving that, uh, water for, uh, our customers as well as, uh, protecting the source water for that greenhouse gas emissions. So in the Climate Action Plan, uh, the city council adopted uh, two goals for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And the greenhouse gas emissions policy statement is to enable our ability to do that through, uh, supporting or, um, not supporting, uh, state legislation. And then the carbon reduction framework has three categories. The first is, uh, preserving transportation revenues. So right now, transportation revenues are based on the gas tax. So being able to have, um, more flexibility for the revenues of that to meet local needs. And I could be, we're supporting, uh, sustainable transportation, allowing investment of evidence-based technologies to reduce emissions from sectors, um, to be less carbon intensive. And then dedicating, uh, revenue to support local governments and climate, climate adaptation and resiliency.
I don't have any concerns about that, but I realized when we were earlier talking about the finance and revenue section, I don't see anything specifically about top fund flexibility in here. But, um, I know that it's of particular interest for a lot of the communities, which are heavily on tourism, but top fund flexibility, as I understand, is some of the only Oregon cities is supporting, which would allow you to have, you'd be able to spend it hypothetically speaking on public safety, for example, instead of only having to reinvest it back into hospitality or things like that.
And there is a bill right now too, and it, and it actually would allow us to go above the amounts for public safety, above the current restrictions. So it wouldn't, um, create any concern on the heart of, uh, folks who currently rely on, right?
We can add something.
Yeah, we love.
We would take an individual bill to the pass, but, you know, kind of an urgent.
Any news?
No.
Um, I have a question on, um, uh, recreational
Immunity?
Immunity. I, I haven't seen anything here. I'm, I know that that's a big, um, pocket point. It's a date. I would definitely want to support that.
We can definitely put something in. We, we.
It's under liability.
Okay, it is.
Resources.
It's under the law. Okay.
But we could do more to call it out because that is a perennial, um, there, there's always something about recreational immunity and we can certainly add, add a more intentional statement.
I think it might be helpful.
Yep, let's do that.
May also just have a question more on where we are in the Three Basin role, and any, I know that there's a lot going on. Is that something for here or somewhere else?
It can be for here, uh, so quite a conversation.
But um, but maybe, okay, so I know that we still have other things, it might not be the time to.
Well, I I'll just, I will just say that we are working hand in hand with the county on this, and we are supporting them right now with their efforts to get something into the legislature that will give them some relief from the current D E Q requirements for reconstruction of that project.
Okay.
But um, the county is is understands our concerns, and they are uh, they're doing a great job and really uh, working with us to make sure our concerns are addressed. We're doing a great job of working with them to make sure that we are in lockstep with them as their pushing for this.
And there is no specific bill.
There's not a bill yet.
So we don't have anything specific, um, and and my opinion, and I think it's verified, Jason, is that the details are gonna be really important. So while we are working together, I think it's about seeing what's in the proposal in the legislation, and we will bring it to you when it is ready.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. We were intending to mention it, but
Yes.
But we've been going through quite a lot. So um, so just for today, we're at a point now, thank you for your um, advice and suggestions for adding and changing some of the policy statements. We'll take that to council at the next meeting, which I think is March tenth. Yes, um. The, we have two ways to go next, so one thing that we like to do when we notice that there are quite a lot of bills on one topic is we like to bring the conversation to you to help us navigate how um, how you're feeling about different policy priorities, especially when they're in competition. And so we have, we are prepared to talk to you about solid waste. We are prepared to talk to you about housing incentives and land use and SCC waivers, and how all of that tension exists between advancing housing production, but then at what cost? Um, and then we also have a whole bunch going on around uh, uh, encampments and enforcement. So we can have that meeting conversation, or we can defer. There are some specific bills that um, it, in my opinion, particularly payment in lieu, we will be invited to have a perspective and come in support. It feels like we are, um, but some of these bills, we can use specific approval or stamp or recommendation to the council as a whole. So would you like to do the topic areas or the bill reviews? We don't have a lot of time, I think, to do both.
Which is a higher priority from the time sensitivity.
Sounds like the review. Bill review feels important to me, you would agree? Okay, um, so on what you have in your packet is a bill review page, so if you'll get used to seeing something that will look like this. Um, Counselor Nordeck knows exactly where to go, having been the longest serving. Um, and so it's the last page of your packet, and it just introduces the bill, and you can actually click through electronically to to surface the whole text. You'll see uh, staff providing a recommended position. Um, in this case, we're talking about House Bill two, five, three, one. We would like to be supportive of this. This is that affordable homeownership. I think I'm in the right place. Nope, I'm talking about something totally wrong. This is Brian! No?
No, this is Anthony.
Oh, hi.
The payment in lieu.
I got something right today.
I'll put my glasses on. Um, thank you so much. I just kept seeing public safety. Um, and so what, this is an opportunity for us to step in support of Counselor, uh, excuse me, Representative Anderson's bill, um, which would be one way that the city could see in and in lieu or Capitol District funding. We would like to support it, and we would take your direction.
Also have very good bipartisan support. We had a very good hearing last session. Didn't move, that being, that's why we've got alternative strategic parallel lines we're running. Um, this one would obviously be wise. It it says what we truly need. The expectation probably isn't that we'd get that much. That being said, we should always ask for what we need, especially in public forums.
So are there any objections to staff advancing this for council consideration on March tenth?
None, and let me know if if the mayor needs backup and an additional person to testify. I'm always happy to carry the water. Just give me the talking points.
Yes. Okay. Um, the next bill is the PFAS bill, um, and Jason, I think we talked about it last time.
Yes.
Um, does anyone have any questions? We'd like to be able to support this uh, study bill.
I've reviewed all of these and support all. The questions.
Does anyone wanna listen to Brian Carrera talk about for Trumps?
I do.
I do also.
Nice, Trevin.
Go ahead, Brian.
All right, so again, I'll go to my spiel. I at first I thought this was a nothing uh, bill, but I after reading about it and after our more and more uh, wildland firefighting and the them using helicopters and uh, dropping water on uh, homes and land, I think it's definitely important because we're seeing the more, the use of drones more and more nowadays, and I think it's definitely uh, important to hold people accountable if they was to cause an accident or interfere with firefighter or police operations.
Any concerns with us advancing this bill to council for support? No? Okay, great. And then um, oh, this is you, Jessica, three, five, oh, three.
Yes, um, and we actually have these hearings on Monday, so I would love to get the uh, approval for testifying for both uh, Senate Bill thirty-one and thirty-five oh three. The exciting part about thirty-five oh three is that while it talks about Clackamas County Housing Authority, and you're probably like, why in the world would Salem Housing Authority wanna speak on behalf of a Clackamas County bill? And that is because they are disposing of their scattered home sites, which is what we intend to do in the next three to five years. But we're also putting a plan together with our community partners and and vetting uh, the community uh, feedback takes a little bit of time, and so we think that if they're awarded, or if this bill passes and they're awarded that funding um, to help convert their uh, affordable or their homes that they'll be disposing of from the public housing program onto the, into the fair market, that this small state investment can actually put them in the hands of the right people. Um, and and open up those opportunities for those at eighty percent AMI um, to purchase. And so if they're successful with this bill, uh, we would be looking to uh, bring a bill forward in the next long session, and we would be asking for funding to help support that. And so this kind of sets that roadmap up for um, this being a successful program. And then uh, Senate Bill thirty-one, I've been working on Orchard Park, it feels like for a million years. And uh, this is a mitigation fund for buildings that are are basically leaving their uh, affordable housing, the regulatory timeframe. And it basically creates a a mitigation fund for the tenants. Um, that funding would be passed through to the housing authorities for anything that's in their community to support those tenants in relocating to another affordable housing op- option. This wasn't available to the tenants of Orchard Park, and it would have been extremely helpful for us to help intervene at that time and and keep some of those folks home uh, in place. Uh, and so, so we're very excited about this one. Um, and this is something that I was in a work group with uh, with Senator Patterson, so she, that her office has asked uh, that I'm able to testify.
Any concerns? Okay.
Yeah, good.
Good, all right. So then um, what we'll plan to do next time we come together is we'll plan to spend some time with those three topic areas, the solid waste, the housing incentives, and um, housing production, and then also the uh, encampments and and public space enforcement. We'll add civil commitment if there's time. Who knows, one other topic area?
Little quick, Courtney, I've heard, I've heard LOC is doing a separate
Transportation.
Civil commitment call on Fridays.
Oh, good.
I'll get you. People were requesting that at Winkles, and I think he set that up, so I'll try to get whoever wants to be in on that.
How did you know? I, that's exactly what I wanted to do.
That's what you wanna do every Friday.
I I would love to see, uh, this is helpful, this one pager on solid waste, but I would love to see if there are any fiscal impacts to the city that can be added to those items.
Perfect.
I mean, it looks like there's a lot of pros and cons to both bills.
If I could speak to that just, just briefly, um, so the intent of these bills not necessarily to have a uh, any position on them, to to use them as examples uh, towards um, the discussion. Um, and so um, very briefly, I mean, we don't have, and as we went through that list of all the different uh, priorities and kind of what our our uh, standpoint is on those different areas, you know, the solid make waste is missing from all of that. And it probably would fit very well under um, the environmental section uh, that Juliana talked about. But uh, there are uh, thirty plus bills now uh, in this session. I think it's the most I've ever seen that are related to solid waste.
Interesting.
Um, and so there's a lot more focus on that in a lot of different areas. Um, and so looking for some directions. So these are just some examples that we're gonna be using uh, to to talk, so I'll bring back more. Uh, but at this time, uh, to answer your question, I don't know.
Okay.
What's fiscal impacts?
And I think that this is a great illustration of um, sort of areas again where we start to see quite a lot of concentration, and then eventually, as we navigate together what the city's position will be, you might see it start to reflect in the policy statements, like we, you know, that's what we carry in with us every session, is those policy statements are a reflection of things that we've learned over the course of other sessions. So thank you for your time today. Thank you. Is that your everything? That's what we're, we are in here. Thank you.